Your significant other, who you will have holding your Bible, stand here.
I just got something off the screen.
Okay. And then you take your seat.
You'll take my seat.
You take your seat after that. After you're sworn in, you take your photos.
Here?
Yeah, you know, you take your, you know, your pictures.
Okay.
And you go here.
Okay.
Wayne. Wayne.
Can you hear me guys?
Can all board members elect, all board members elect, please take your seats. All board members elect and board members of the Board of Education, please take your seat.
Erica, my fault. I had, because I was in a session, I had turned off my volume.
Good evening, everyone. We will get started shortly, so just give us a few moments. Thank you so much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Oath of Office for newly elected, re-elected and appointed board members for the Prince George's County Board of Education. I am Erica Berry Wilson, Executive Director of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to thank each and every one of you, our elected officials, our family and our friends for coming out tonight for this joyous occasion. Before we continue with the program, I want to first acknowledge our Board Chair, Dr. Seguin Eubanks, who could not be with us this evening. However, he has joined us virtually, and he wanted to give some brief remarks before we continued on with our program. So I'll yield the floor to Dr. Eubanks.
Good evening. First, I hope, can everyone hear me okay? Wonderful. Good evening. I certainly do wish that I could be there in person for this important and joyous occasion. But I want to make sure that I congratulated each and every one of our incoming board members and returning board members for taking on this incredibly important and humbling task of serving Prince George's County Public Schools and the talented students and families we serve every day. I just note quickly that actually the reason that I couldn't be there is I'm in Dallas at a conference called Learning Forward. Learning Forward is the preeminent organization for professional learning for teachers and principals and school administrators across the country and the world. I mention it just because of the great work that Prince George's County Public Schools does and how they represent us nationally and internationally. We're here because Prince George's County Public Schools has great partnerships like the one with OTD, the Office of Talent Development, that is part of something called PD Redesign, which is a small group of districts across the country looking at new and different ways to improve professional learning for teachers. And I'm representing a group that's working with Prince George's County, Dorchester County, Maryland State Department of Education, Learning Forward, and others to improve the quality of the teaching of science and next generation science standards for teachers throughout Maryland. So I say all that just to say, incoming board members, that we do so much good in this system and so many things that were, that are examples to the rest of the country that we often don't hear much about, even as board members, frankly, we were presented with a lot of challenges and problems, but I implore you, as you join us, to continue to find and spread the good word of the work that we do. I know you'll do it well. I thank you again on behalf of parents like myself and on behalf of citizens, and welcome to the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, for those remarks. Again, we would like to thank our special guests, family members and friends of those being sworn in this evening, members of the administration, Dr. Goldson, Christian Rhodes, and members of the public for your presence this evening. Additionally, we would like to thank our elected officials and dignitaries who are also present this evening. I have Mr. John Richardson, a Democratic Central Committee, representing District 25; Gary Mobley, Chief Deputy of the Clerk of the Circuit Court; Judge Ingrid Turner; Retired Judge L. Amin; Former Vice Chair of the Board of Education, Mr. Owen Johnson; Delegate Michael Jackson, representing District 27. He's also the Chair of the Prince George's County House of Delegates; Delegate Darryl Barnes, representing District 25; Delegate Susan Proctor, representing District 27; And we have our County Executive, Ms. Angela Also-Brooks. At this time, I will yield the floor to Ms. Also-Brooks for some brief remarks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really honored to be here tonight. I want to begin by saying congratulations and thank you to all of our board members, newly elected, re-elected and appointed, soon to be appointed. Want to say congratulations to each of you and thank you so much for your hard work and your perseverance and for your service. I'm really honored to be here tonight, and I won't speak terribly long. What I have to say to you is I am here quite simply because of two things. I am here because of my education and the village that was there to ensure that I could be successful. And I have to tell you that because of those things, I am obsessed with the children of Prince George's County. I'm obsessed with their education. I'm obsessed with the village that we build around them, and I know that you feel the same way. And so I am so looking forward to working with you all to ensure that our children get the very best that they deserve from us. The most profound obligation of government is to educate its children. And I am really looking forward to working with each of you, to working with our CEO, Monica Goldson. Dr. Goldson, I have to tell you, has done a fabulous job. I've been really, really enjoying working with her, and I'm looking forward to working with each of you. I understand that the business of educating children, first of all, belongs to the community. Each of us has a role to play. The County Executive has a role to play. The Board of Education has a role to play. Dr. Goldson, our County Council, it is the obligation of our entire community to educate its children. What I will say is that this business is complex. I think back to my time in high school. When I was in ninth grade, my school required each of us to volunteer in the community. It was called community service hours, that we got community lab hours. And I was assigned to an elementary school very close to my high school. And I went over to that school, and I was very, very bright-eyed and optimistic about what I would find. I was so excited to join a combination first, second grade class. And I would go there each Wednesday to volunteer. Well, on my first visit to this school, I sat my bookbag down, I started interacting with these beautiful kids and talking to them and helping them. And when the day was over, I grabbed my bag and went out to the bus stop, and I realized once I got to the bus stop that one of the angels in the classroom had stolen my wallet and that I couldn't get on the bus. And that, that particular situation really stuck with me, really has stuck with me for a lifetime, because it reminded me that as brilliant as those kids were, they had obviously been exposed very early to things that would trouble them, that would hamper them, and that the education of children has to be comprehensive. It's not just what happens in the classroom that becomes critical to their success. It's what happens to their families, it's what happens in their communities that very often either allows them to succeed or causes them to decline. And so this is the role that we have, this is the job that we have, is to make sure that we're not only providing for our children a first-rate education in the classroom, but my solemn obligation and solemn promise to you is that you have a government that is also likewise committed to ensuring that our children have what they need in their homes, that their parents and families will have access to the full body of resources that we have in the government, because the truth of it is, children who are hungry, children who are not well-rested, children who are at home at night watching somebody beat somebody else cannot learn. And so it will be important for us to, to work together to ensure that not only the children thrive, but that their families thrive as well. And so again, I want to thank you for the role that you play, ensuring that what happens in the classroom is comprehensive, that our kids have an opportunity to compete against the best and brightest, without respect for their zip code, without respect for whether or not their parents were educated. This is the obligation that we have. I'll tell you one last story, and then I'll yield. I know you didn't invite me to talk all night long, but it reminds me that I had an opportunity all these years later, when we talk about the complexities of education, to visit Sylvania, Judge Sylvania Woods Elementary School. Visited there this spring and was invited to talk to a young mentoring group of, group of young girls who were so beautiful. These girls, I believe, were between the ages of eight and 10, and they have a Jims Group, it's Girls Empowered to Meet Success, or something along those lines. And when I got into that classroom that evening to talk to the kids, it was after school, there was one girl who stuck out to me, and she was absolutely gorgeous. I looked at her and I could see on her poverty. I could see it in her clothing. I could see that her hair was disheveled, but the other thing that I could see is she sat up straight, she looked me in the eye, every question, her hand popped up. She was so brilliant. And what I came to understand about her is she didn't even understand her poverty, but I did. And she ought to have the same opportunity that I had growing up in Prince George's County, to be well-educated, to experience all that life had to offer. That is our responsibility, is ensuring that when I looked at that bright, young girl, and I understood just by looking what obstacles she faced, that's our responsibility as much as educating her in the classroom. So again, the task is one that is, I believe, a heavy burden in some ways, because it means everything, everything to our children. Again, I am obsessed with it. I know that you are as well, and I just thank you so much for your care. Thank you for lending us your expertise and your experience or your perspective. I think together, we will do great. Together, we will do great. And I'll say this last thing. The thing I promise you is that we are at the starting line of transformational leadership, is what you ask for, and I tell you, it is my solemn mission every day to offer that to you. So thank you so much for having me tonight, and I look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Also-Brooks, for those wonderful remarks. We also had a couple of other dignitaries and elected officials join us this evening. Mr. Colin Byrd from the Green Belt City Council; and Fay Ho, or How, excuse me for the pronunciation, from the Democratic Central Committee, District 24. So on to the part of the program that we've all been waiting for, the swearing and ceremony. The following board members will be sworn in this evening. Mr. Joshua Thomas, newly elected School Board Member for District 2; Ms. Pamela Boozer-Struther, newly elected School Board Member for District 3; Ms. Belinda Queen, newly elected School Board Member, District 6; Mrs. Sonia Williams, re-elected School Board Member for District 9; and Mr. D. Paul Montero Jr., newly appointed School Board Member. At this time, Ms. Mahasen, I'm sorry, I apologize. Mahasen Amin, Clerk of the Circuit Court, will administer the Oath of Office. Just to inform everyone, the process, we will administer the oath to each member individually, and then we will ask those newly sworn-in board members to take their seats here at the dais, and once we do that, we will then yield the floor to those board members for remarks. So Ms. Amin, I'll use for you. And we invite all family members and friends of Mr. Joshua Thomas to please come forward. I
I.
State your name.
Joshua M. Thomas.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will support
And that I will support.
The charters and laws
The charters and laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of
Execute the office of
Board Member for the Board of Education.
Board Member for the Board of Education.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter
And the Charter.
And laws
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Pamela Boozer-Struther, please. I
I. Pamela Boozer-Struther.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will
And that I will.
Be faithful
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And that I Excuse me. And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will
And that I will.
Support the Charter
Support the Charter.
And laws of Prince George's County.
And laws of Prince George's County.
And that I will
And that I will.
To the best of my skill
To the best of my skill.
And judgment
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office
Execute the office.
Of Board Member for Board of Education.
As Board Member for Board of Education.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter
And the Charter.
And laws
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations. Ms. Belinda Queen. Hi, ma'am. How are you doing? How are you? Okay. Belinda, Belinda. You're gonna put your, you're gonna put your left hand on the Bible. You're gonna raise your right hand. And so when I Are we all here? Did everyone come? Ready? I
I. Belinda Queen.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and that I will be faithful
and that I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
and bear true allegiance
to the state of Maryland
to the state of Maryland
and support the Constitution
and support the Constitution
and laws thereof
and laws thereof
and that I will support the charter
and that I will support the charter
and laws
and laws
of Prince George's County
of Prince George's County
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my skill
to the best of my skills
and judgment
and judgment
diligently and faithfully
diligently and faithfully
without partiality or prejudice
without partiality or prejudice
execute the office of
execute the office of
board member for Board of Education
board member for Board of Education
for Prince George's County
for Prince George's County
according to the Constitution
according to the Constitution
and laws of this state
and laws of this state
and the charter
and the charter
and laws
and laws
of Prince George's County
of Prince George's County
congratulations. This is a special moment for me. This is the highlight of my day, that I get to swear in my sister to the school board. Sonia Williams. I
I
Sonia Williams do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and that I will
and that I will
be faithful
be faithful
and bear true allegiance
and bear true allegiance
to the state of Maryland
to the state of Maryland
and support the Constitution
and support the Constitution
and laws thereof
and laws thereof
and that I will support
and that I will support
the charter
the charter
and laws
and laws
of Prince George's County
of Prince George's County
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my skill
to the best of my skill
and judgment
and judgment
diligently and faithfully
diligently and faithfully
without partiality or prejudice
without partiality or prejudice
execute the office of
execute the office of
board member for Board of Education
board member for Board of Education
for Prince George's County
for Prince George's County
according to the Constitution
according to the Constitution
and laws
and laws
of this state
of this state
and the charter
and the charter
and laws
and laws
of Prince George's County
of Prince George's County
congratulations.
thank you so much.
Mr. Montero? I
I, Paul Montero
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and that I will be faithful
and that I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
and bear true allegiance
to the state of Maryland
to the state of Maryland
and support the Constitution
and support the Constitution
and laws thereof
and laws thereof
and that I will support the charter
and that I will support the charter
and laws of
and laws of
Prince George's County
Prince George's County
and that I will
and that I will
to the best of my skill
to the best of my skill
and judgment
and judgment
diligently and faithfully
diligently and faithfully
without partiality or prejudice
without partiality or prejudice
execute the office of
execute the office of
board member for Board of Education
board member for the Board of Education
for Prince George's County
for Prince George's County
according to the Constitution
according to the Constitution
and laws of this state
and laws of this state
and the charter
and the charter
and laws
and laws
of Prince George's County
of Prince George's County
congratulations.
thank you very much. And today is Crystal's birthday, let's just celebrate.
Thanks Ms. Amin, and again, let's send out congratulations to all our newly sworn-in board members. Okay, we could do a little bit better in that, these are the people who are representing the interests of our children of Prince George's County. We have a few other dignitaries and elected officials who have joined us, and again, we apologize for the oversight. We have Mayor Grant from the city of Sea Pleasant. And Mr. Sean Malden, Mayor of Capitol Heights. We have the county council member representing District 6 Derrick Leon Davis. We have the vice chair of the Democratic Central Committee, Ms. Teresa Dudley. And former member of the Democratic Central Committee, Ms. Latasha Ward. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to take a moment to thank County Executive Angela Alster-Brooks, all of our elected officials, Ms. Amin, and the Office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court, PG CPS Administration, and members of the audience for taking time out of your busy schedules to join us this evening. And again, we just want to say congratulations to all our newest members, I know that our current members are eagerly looking forward to working with you. And actually, before we dismiss, we're gonna ask all our current board members and our newly sworn-in board members to take one picture with our county executive as well, and Dr. Monica Golson. So if we can ever have everyone gathering in the well for that picture, that would be great, thank you. So again, on behalf of the Prince George's County Board of Education, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out and celebrating our newly sworn-in board members. We are so excited with what we have to come in this county and working together to improve our school system for our children, because it is, it does take a village, as Ms. Alster-Brooks had mentioned. And we're so excited about what's to come. So again, I thank each and every one of you for coming out. We do invite our board members and immediate family members to join us in the back for reception, for our other audience. Oh, thank you, I'm so sorry. I apologize, I'm moving along so fast, I apologize definitely. We would like to get brief remarks from our newly sworn-in members, again, newly sworn-in members, charge it to my mind and not my heart, I apologize. And we will start first with Mr. Paul Montero, have about three minutes for your remarks, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much for having me, I'm excited to serve, I have to thank our county executive for giving me the opportunity to give back to a system that gave a lot to me, I'm a proud alum of the Prince George's County Public School System. It was great to me, Adelphi Elementary, Buck Lodge Middle, and High Point High School, had some wonderful teachers. And as much as I love the system, I think part of love is being honest. And the challenges that faced the system when I was a student, some of them are still with us. I'm not interested in pontificating, I'm not interested in assigning blame, I'm interested in working with everybody to say, how do we move forward? And make this county the best it can be, I've been blessed to serve in jobs that let me see the rest of the country. And we are a great place to live, and people need to know that about Prince George's County. And in the same breath, I would say, I've seen other places do things that I think we would do well to emulate and borrow, and modify for our own needs. And also share some of the innovations that we've come up with here with the rest of the country. So I just take that opportunity, having seen the rest of the country, not because I'm smart, but because God is good, and had a great foundation that was laid here in this county, to use those experiences, hopefully share and add value to this board, to make the system the best it can be, because I talked a lot about on the campaign trail, the challenge the country faces with, we are tracking a generation of young people to poor outcomes across the country. And the educational system is the way to stop that. It was my way out to have more of an opportunity than my parents had. So I just look forward to breaking that prison, to drop out to prison pipeline, dealing with some of the perennial challenges, and adding value again to a system that gave me everything. So thank you very much for the chance to serve.
Ms. Belinda Queen?
Okay, got it. I want to first start just saying to God be all the glory for the things he have done. I want to first thank my moms, who I love and appreciate so dear. To my family, thank you for putting up with me for the last year and a half, especially to my girls, they had to give up a lot of tennis shoes on this campaign, and I thank you for that. I truly thank you, to the community, thank you so very much for your support and for believing in me, I will stand up, I will speak up, and I will work hard to move Prince George's County forward. To my ride or die partners, the Andrews', I love you, I love you very much, my ride or die partners out in the community. I want to say to Mayor Malden, to my campaign manager, thank you so, so very much, he worked really hard on my image, and it took a lot. And it took a lot for me to hold my mouth, but thank you so very much for that. To Mayor Grant, to Delegate Barnes, to Latasha Ward, and Fay Martin-Howell, and I can go on, thank you guys for having my back, for being there for me. To my cousin John Richardson, I love you, family over everything, no matter what, but I love you. And I just want to say that I will work hard, too, Angela, thank you for being here, thank you for the calls, I appreciate it, thank you for reaching out for me. We will work together hard to move Prince George's County forward, even though I think a little different from my colleague, because I was born and raised here. This has always been a great county, always been a great school system, we don't need nothing for nobody else, we have it right here, and we will continue to show people that we have it. We just need to take the time to invest into our schools, to invest into our kids, and to let everybody know the greatness. and to let everybody know the greatness that we have right here in Prince George's County. Thank you.
Mr. Joshua Thomas?
Good evening, everyone. I want to start by briefly giving a, telling a quick story about where this whole campaign came from and how we got here today. In November of 2016, a good friend of mine, David Murray, who's now my colleague on the board, asked me to help to get Rahila Ahmed elected to the Board of Education. I worked at the polls for her at the Bowie Annex on Election Day, and it was my very first time being a part of any campaign of any sort. I'll have you know that I never ran for student government, and this is my very first run for political office, which was now successful. And it was my experience working for Rahila that day, though we got some unfortunate news about our presidential election, I was very, very excited about the opportunity to have helped another young progressive candidate win a seat on the school board. And that was where the seed was planted. A few months later, I told my dear friend, David Murray, that I was frustrated that there were nine elected school board members and only one of them was a teacher. And I myself taught in the classroom for a few years, and I felt that we needed more teachers making the decisions that affect schools and students. What a crazy concept. And David looked at me and said, are you serious? Are you sure you want to do this? And I said, I'm sure. And now, fast forward, here we are. I'm so excited to be able to join my new colleagues on the Board of Education, as well as current sitting board members, to really do some meaningful things here in the county. I want to now just take a brief moment to thank a few people in particular. First, I would like to thank the over 13,000 voters of District Two who overwhelmingly supported me in this election. Thank you all very, very much. I'd like to also thank our county executive. I'm so excited to work with you and our CEO, Dr. Goldson. I'm looking very forward to working with both of you. I'd also now like to thank my teachers, administrators, classmates, and fellow friends and parents of Eleanor Roosevelt High School. I get the amazing opportunity to represent my own high school on the Board of Education. I'd also like to thank the community that raised and really groomed me, the Martha M. Church of Greater Washington, as well as the Martha M. Church Diocese of North America and Europe. They have played an amazing and incredible role in my development, and I'd like to thank them. In particular, I'd like to thank our current vicar, Reverend Anu Uman, who is here this evening. I'd now also like to take a moment to thank my best friends and brothers who are here supporting me, Kevin John, Stephen George, Justin Jacob, Nevin Thungacian. I appreciate all of your help and support through the years and your friendship. And I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge one of my very best friends, who is not here this evening, Christina Chaco. She supported me throughout this entire campaign, both morally and in person. And I'd also now use this opportunity to acknowledge her parents, who are like my own parents, Mr. Chaco Daniel and Ms. Rosanna Chaco. Now, I know my thank you list is long here. I'm towards the second half. I'm at the second half, okay? Since I'm talking about second parents, I have to acknowledge a few other second parents here in the room. And so I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Mr. Pique and Ms. Susan Paulos, Mr. Sonny and Sissy Jacob, Mr. Jacob and Betty Vergis, Mr. Samuel and Ms. Kunyama Samuel. Thank you all for playing such an important role in grooming me to the young man that I've become today. And now I'd like to thank my new colleagues on the Board of Education, especially my dear friends, Mr. Edward Burrows, Ms. Rahila Ahmed, and Mr. David Murray. Thank you all very much. And lastly, a few people who played an important role in this campaign. Mr. Shakur Ahmed, who has not only, yeah. Who has not only served as a mentor, but an advisor and a strategist throughout this entire campaign. Thank you for all of your help. I'd also like to thank Ms. Jacqueline Murray. Ms. Jacqueline Murray is the mother of David Murray, but is might as well be my own mother with the amount of time that she put into this campaign. So thank you, Ms. Murray. Okay, I'm at the last line of my thank yous, I promise. I'd now like to thank my immediate family, who have been supporting me this entire process. My sister, Varsha Thomas, who is a teacher and who inspired me to go into the classroom. Thank you, Varsha. My father, Dr. Matthew T. Thomas, who is now no longer more popular than I am. My mother, Nancy Thomas, who came out and knocked on doors with me almost every single day, wearing that Joshua M. Thomas T-shirt, writing notes on people's cards when they weren't there to answer. I'm so, so grateful for all of your help and support, Mom and Papa, and I look forward to representing you both well. And last, but very not least, I must acknowledge my two late grandparents, who could not be here to see this special day. My grandfather, who I grew up with my entire life. Mr. TJ Thomas, who played such an important role in my upbringing. And my grandmother, Eliama Thomas. I know that they're looking down upon me very proud. And so I'm excited to represent all of my friends and family on the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to serving with all of you. Thank you.
Ms. Pamela Boozer-Struther?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much. Today, such a joyous day in Prince George's County. And we started the day at the inauguration of Angela Alsobrooks, the first female county executive for Prince George's County. Angela, at the beginning of this campaign season, you set a pace and you set a vision for children. And I am so honored to be in this room with you this evening to be your partner in that work. To the voters of District Three, thank you for your trust in me. To my family, to Margaret and Kyle, the pace that we've been on for the past year. I can't thank you enough for all your support and patience in being there every day to support this campaign. To my campaign team, my dearest friends that became throughout District Three, an incredible family of supporters focused on our children, focused on equity in education, focused on moving Prince George's County Public Schools forward. And I look forward to working with all of the parents in our schools, focusing on our children, and our PTAs, and especially working in collaboration with this board of incredibly dedicated and smart people. It's been so great to get to know so many of you during this campaign and now that I'm seated with you. And to Dr. Goldson, you have led us through incredibly smooth transition. You have listened to teachers, to parents, to the community on priorities. And I look forward to supporting you and your continued work and your staff. So thank you to everyone for being here this evening, and I look forward to our work together.
Now we actually get to the end. I apologize, Ms. Sonia Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. I want to thank God for putting me in this seat. And I want to start with a story that most people may not have ever heard me tell. I remember sitting in the car as I was the Assistant Chief of Purchasing in Charles County, asking God, what was I doing in that seat? Being a civil engineer who built the International Terminal, I was a part of that project management team, the International Terminal of BWI, who've worked on many projects around the nation. I was there as Assistant Chief of Purchasing in Charles County. It was 2008, right after the economic downfall. And I was there because I had a child who was born nine weeks early. I was running a nonprofit that, at that time, grants dried up, so I had to work for someone else. And so I sat there and I asked God, what was I doing here? When I fast forward to 2014 and I took over the seat to represent District Nine, I realized that all the work that I had done, learning government, learning community development, building, everything. I built airports, roads, houses, apartment buildings, office buildings. I use all of that education here. So when I took the oath today and it said, use your skills and best judgment, I bring all of that to this seat to make decisions for the best in Prince George's County Public Schools. I'm an alumni of Prince George's County Public Schools, District Eight, but I represent District Nine where we rock. And everyone knows that I say that, not because we're always successful there in District Nine or in Prince George's County, but we have a lot of success that we can brag about in Prince George's County. And if we show people what we're accomplishing, then more people will strive to meet that success. So when I talk about how great we're doing here in Prince George's County, it's not to forget about those that we have to work on. It's to remind people that we're moving in the right direction. We're doing the work every day. And so when I sit here in this seat and represent District Nine and make decisions for the entire Prince George's County Public Schools, I bring skills, education, and experience to help us move this forward. And I appreciate all of my board members who sit here today and the skills and education and judgment that they bring. I look forward to working with them and making decisions to move us forward and continue to move us forward. I appreciate Dr. Goldson for stepping into the seat when we had, we were overcoming a lot of trying times, but she took it and she is running with it. Your staff is so supportive. I appreciate all the hard work that they do every single day, every single day. And I also appreciate the charge and the energy and the inspiration that you have placed on us, County Executive Angela Alsobrooks. I appreciate that. So I want to thank my parents for giving me all that they have to make sure that all seven of us, including my younger sister, is successful. All the sacrifices that they have made. I appreciate my husband, who is here on his birthday, and taking his time. You know, we should be celebrating him, at least I should be celebrating him, but he's here to support me, and I appreciate him so much for all the sacrifices that he has made over the last five years. And my son, who's in the audience, I appreciate him because there was a lot of mommy guilt during the summer. And so we're going to make up for that. So I just want to thank everyone who's here to support what we do here in Prince George's County. It is not me. It is not us. It's all of us working together as a team to make sure that we're successful here in Prince George's County Public Schools. Thank you.
So I would like to thank each and every one of our guests for coming out this evening. As I mentioned earlier, we do have a reception in the back. We are first inviting our board members and their immediate family to join us in that reception in the back. And then we will have board staff assistants who will be able to escort other members as we allow our board members and their family members to be served first. Again, I want to thank each and every person for coming out this evening, and everyone have a safe trip home. Thank you so much. Again, I want to thank each and every person for coming out this evening and everyone have a safe trip home. Thank you so much.